To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, inviolable with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, morning, everybody. I'll call a meeting to order.
This doesn't have the screen on it, is it? Do I have to look it open or?
Yeah, I don't think.
No, it is mine.
Ladybug's movie, but.
Yeah. Uh, agenda approval.
That is amended agenda. I make a motion to approve the amended agenda as per.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, agenda approved. Minutes from the eleven two meeting.
I kind of looked them over, I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, minutes approved. General public concerns.
Anybody down the doors?
Phone, zoom, outdoors, no? Okay, seeing and hearing done, we'll move right along to the public hearing on a budget amendment.
Let's do our claims.
Okay, let's do the claims. You guys, everybody looked at them?
Yep.
I got claims of two hundred thousand, six hundred and thirty-one and seventy cents for the general and one thousand eight hundred and seventy, seventy-five cents for drainage.
I'd add also, I'd second his motion.
All right, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say drainings to your record?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we got them all.
Eight hundred and seventy, seventy-five.
Okay, good enough. All right, so claims approved. Better sign those because they tend to forget sometimes.
What a beautiful day for sitting with windows open in.
I know, in November.
November and nice breeze.
I was surprised that when I got up this morning, it's still this night out.
Yeah. Well, S-word is in the forecast until.
Yeah, tomorrow. It's going to warm up the end of the week again.
Yeah, by the end of the week.
Thank you, darling, we're getting good ones. Totally awesome.
I guess I'll take one for what'd they say last night, like seven days in a row we had seventy degrees.
Yeah, nice.
Yep, they said it was.
Morning, Kent.
Good morning.
Well, are you going by that clock?
I'll make a motion to build on the public hearing on the budget amendment.
Sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, public hearing, open. Now I have the discussion of the budget amendment.
And if you will hand this to Kent, here's a copy for him. We had a few things that we addressed on our budget amendment this time. I know it's from my other sheet, I guess I didn't make a copy of that. We agreed a while back for conservation to be able to purchase some additional property that we would do a loan to them until they got their financing back. So, two hundred thousand of that, which is on line twenty-four, is for that particular. No, it shouldn't be, it should be up on the sixes. I'm gonna go grab that other sheet because it's much easier to read than this one.
All right.
First one on line eighteen for public safety and legal services. We amended that by seventy thousand. That was the additional amount that the LEC board needs to operate for the, for this fiscal year. They had some unexpected expenses and the LEC board approved a budget amendment. So the county needs to do our side and the city will take care of their side. Under physical health and social services, which is line nineteen, we amended that for ten thousand because we seem to have additional senatorian bills coming from our senatorian. I know there's been a lot of new houses put up and different facilities going in and I think it just is something, I mean, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
But you have to put some budget money in there to cover those costs.
Yeah, and I think when properties sell in the county, they have to inspect it.
Yeah, yeah. The third one is the physical health and social, I'm sorry, I did it up. County environment and education, which is line twenty-one, that was the money for the land purchase as well as an interfund loan that we did last year to, for conservation or no, that's, yeah, to repay that, no, but that wouldn't be under the sixes. Oh, we wanted to purchase secondary road shop and then forty-two thousand, fifteen for the shop, forty-two thousand for, what did he say here?
I don't know, Redwick shop you were talking about, maybe?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Todd, it said, da-da-da, he wanted to make sure that you knew that we will be reimbursed to two hundred thousand, but right now he needed the money upfront. The remaining ninety-two will come from his land acquisition fund and from his REAP account. So even though it sounds like a lot, it's more a matter of shifting money around for some of it while also going through the necessary steps in order to be reimbursed for the grant portion of the project. If you have any questions, he said you can give him a call.
I think this is the land up north of Redwick that he purchased.
Yes, so.
Heritage foundation.
Yes, and it's one of those, they have to pay for it to get the grant money, so they needed this money to pay for it.
You bet.
Yep, I think that pretty well covers it.
Government services to residents, which is line twenty-three, we amended that for twenty-six thousand additional expenses for election. This general election has been unprecedented in the amount of items that we needed to for COVID, you know, the throwaway secrecy slaves, masks that we were given some by the Secretary of State, but we purchased additional plus Kim wipe or Andy wipes to clean Clark's wipes, ink pens, additional equipment we purchased to make it easier, the letter opener, the machine that folded everything for us so we didn't have to just manually do all this, it went much faster. Some of those will be reimbursed through grant money, so you'll see the offset in that when we do the revenues later on in the year. Under administration, which is on line twenty-four, that was the interfund loan and repayment of the interfund loan. We did a interfund loan to General Basic at the beginning of the year because our fund balance was low until the tax money came in. And so, when that's done, then you've paid money out and you've deposited money back into, but there's no budget there, so it shows a minus in your budget, so you have to account for that in both accounts because it came from general supplemental over and so it shortage on the supplemental and then it was paid out of General Basic to pay it back, so we take care of those minuses by putting the money back in there, so it's just a paper flow thing. That's all we have for budget amendment.
For the bottom line of the office, oh, go ahead, Dick.
No public can put, we'll make a motion in the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three, the resolution approving Humboldt County budget amendment for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passed.
Okay, well, have you signed two of those because one goes into the state, one states with us.
Okay. Well, I'd say Ben's here, we think we can bump you up instead of push you back for a change.
Sure.
Why don't you go ahead, we've got a couple things here on your docket.
Yeah, so the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve the final pay voucher for LC one eight three zero zero one. This is the box over at PCI did south of Gosh Park. This is just the final retained, just thirty days after initial payment.
Okay, and everything looks good on the project?
Yep, we just need to come back in and do a asphalt overlay in the spring.
Okay.
I've already talked to Alyssa and it's on her radar.
Are they going to keep an eye on that all through the?
We end up blading and maintaining it throughout the winter.
All right, awesome.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve final payment voucher Peterson for project LC one eight three zero zero one for eighteen fifty one sixty-eight finalized in the project.
Oh, second, Ted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
The last item that I've got, I don't have any paperwork on. Gary Nave came in. Wednesday or Thursday when I was out, he filled out some driveway permits with Sue. He's looking at widening eleven driveways and wants to run them to a hundred foot length. Our policy says anything over fifty foot, we have to deny and bring to the board. He's in the process of getting the property owner's signatures. I guess I'm looking at if the board's planning to approve them, we'll just approve them when he brings in paperwork with signatures, so.
Um, I really don't want to approve them without knowing, having you look, did you know exactly where they're all at already?
I don't, no.
Okay.
I agree, how many did you say?
Eleven.
I, I think, I don't want to just.
That's fine.
There are some places that make it fine.
Yeah, okay, you know, I'm all in favor of making the wider driveways, these guys aren't pulling out on the road and riding stuff.
Yep, I'd rather the landowner signs the paperwork that they know.
That's what he's working on right now.
That's what I'm saying, they knew it, everybody's covered.
Okay, but that'd be the, you know, I have no objection to widening the driveway if it's good with you.
I, I put it on in anticipation that he had all of the paperwork, I guess, on Thursday or Friday to us and that didn't happen yet, you know, tracking down eleven projects.
All right. See the paperwork, then we'll deal with it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Can you, can we, how do you even do that? If he gets the paperwork, then he sends us a message and we approve it?
I can, I can.
Or we're active to go.
Yeah, I can just send it all by email to you guys.
I mean, I don't know, do you plan on trying to do it yet this fall?
I assume so.
I assume so, yeah, that's the reason.
Well, in the meantime, wouldn't you, Admiral Dave, go out and take a look at the locations just to make sure that any landowner signing off, that there's not any.
Yeah, once he brings the paperwork in with the landowner's signature and we know where the locations are.
You go look at them.
Yeah.
And then forward that to us.
Yep.
Works for me.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
We're running mostly full staff. Denny's back from Fennel leave. Our other people are all back, I've just got one guy that's recovering from minor surgery that should be back next Monday or the Monday after, depending on recovery.
And we got all of our new employees working now or not?
They all are.
Okay.
We've got job applications out until, I think, this Friday for the boat position. As of right now, we don't have a lot of applicants.
What is the, I was gonna say, is that, is that the one?
That's where Bob Blair left it.
Is it for patrol, is that where you're going, does someone take that position and this would be for a?
They, I usually let them decide that in-house.
Right.
What I see happening is I see Larry moving from running over by Livermore to running west of Bode, which is like his home territory. I see him switching over there, I don't know if one of the other guys is going to jump into a blade. I just tell them to have that figured out so that when we start interviewing, I know if I'm hiring a blade operator or trucker.
That's what I wanted.
Yep.
Okay, that's for the boat shop area.
That's for the boat shop, yeah.
Okay.
And we saw it this week.
Yep, we've got this week, so if they're interested, get their applications in and we'll go through the interview process in the next week or so, hopefully snow holds off on us for a while.
Yeah.
However, speaking of that, did you get all your calcium and all that stuff, were set good?
We got our two kilograms of calcium yesterday, or last week and about twenty thousand dollars in blades last week too, so we're fully stocked and ready for winter.
I just, and we keep those in the corner and don't have to use many of them?
I would too, that would be great.
Well, I guess we get what we get and we're mowing.
We're mowing back slopes, we've got most all of our snow fence installed except for a few fields that haven't been, that they're waiting for an hydro stick to get put on. We are planning on cleaning ditch north of Redwick around the curve on the gravel. We've got an agreement from a pair of tracts to cast into his field. We're cleaning ditch north and west of Bode and Olson's field, we're casting that out in the field. As far as I know, we're caught up on driveways, we've got all those installed. And we're finally caught up.
Good, that's good to hear.
You guys have been getting a lot done.
We've been getting a lot done, yep. Last week I got some surveying done while Dave was gone and did some bridge inspection with our bridge inspector Thursday, went and inspected all of our high trusses.
Okay.
Pretty well, kind of caught up, but decent spot for this time of year.
Just busy and, yeah, hopefully the weather holds up for us and we can keep going.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Call ahead on the day, right?
Yep.
Okay, got that?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, we got that done. Well, let's finish up a few miscellaneous things, and one, we have another date and time for county budget amendment this Saturday. Hey, you will give us that technical detail?
You want another budget amendment to get all the projects ready from the grant or not, from the Geo Barn Land?
Yeah.
So if we went from, let's see, ten days, if we went like December seventh, would that work for you guys?
Okay.
December seventh?
Mm-hmm. And anytime you'd be fine and we'll get to this whole thing.
Okay, should do it nine o'clock?
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
All right, I'll make a motion, set the time and date for the county budgets, let you know, limit to December seventh at nine AM.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Nine AM, Monday, December seventh it is.
Peggy, would I be able to jump on that budget amendment if I need to?
Oh, you bet, Ben.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about me?
No.
What time was that set for?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, okay, thank you.
Ben, we're still, November twenty-third, you got a hearing for the DDs.
I think the odds is gonna have.
That isn't for you, is it?
Uh, no, that's Marinage. I've got it on my calendar too.
All right.
I can't remember which drainage district it is though.
DD.
That's the one with hundred mark, right? Yeah. Okay.
I thought that was a bidding of a job, but I didn't write that.
That's a hearing.
Yeah, sorry. Jeremy's already said, isn't it?
Yeah, twenty-third. All right, so Kerry, you're here early, we can get you in early.
You got it.
Go ahead with what you have today.
All right, how are you? Good.
Yeah, I'll just make a passing around.
Do a look. They're both the same.
I got two, I'll put one thing, I'll put one in your drawer.
Well, thank you for letting me come here and talk to you. I ran into a kind of little dilemma I would like some help with. When we started doing the new radio system, the seven hundred system for the county, there was no one in my position to request things for grants and so forth. Once I got in and got up to speed, I realized that we do need radios, we need pagers mostly, and the grant process had already been completed. So I asked for a quote for fifteen pagers and two portable radios, some electronic engineering now and for Dodge, you have that before you, and I'm going to ask the board if they would be willing to spend the money for me to be able to get that equipment. It's going to be used for our SERC team, our community emergency response team. Right now we have nine members, possibly ten, there's an application out, but it's kind of full, it's asking me, but we got ten. I'd like to have fifteen members that can respond quite quickly. We have been using our stuff, our trailers been called out a couple times now, one to the fire up at the yacht club and also for an explosion out in Gilmore City, and it was used by the ATF and all those law enforcement people to gather evidence and to use there. So it's nice that the officers are kind of saying, we forgot you had that, now we've remembered that you have it, we're going to start using it, so it's good. I just need to get it out there, sometimes I'm not available and that's where SERC comes in. But to be able to get ahold of them sometimes can be a little dicey, so that's why I'm looking for pagers and for portable radios.
A couple things, Kerry, you got two different amounts to us for here.
Right, one is for two portable radios and one is for the fifteen pagers. So the two portable radios come to sixty-four forty and eighty cents, and the pagers, which are on the last page, come to twelve thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And that's programs, chargers, everything that you need to get them going around the back.
And this is all targeted for the SERC team?
This is all for the SERC team. I had to spend really what extra money I had to get radios for the emergency operation center and then the communications trailer that we have, the emergency response trailer that we have, and that took up most of my extra money. So, but those were a priority at that point. So now that I have that and we have those radio stuff and they're working, we have to look at how we can respond.
Another thing you mentioned, I've been through this whole radio business, we all know has been going on forever, and you weren't in the position to request grant money because we've all have knowledge of grants from the fire departments, grant money that they've received or will. What's the possibility of the emergency management getting some grant money now?
It would possibly be a possibility, but, you know, a lot of grant money's already used up and that's what I'm worried about. So we'd have to look at other avenues and sometimes those avenues aren't very forthcoming with grants for this purpose, for communication. They usually believe it belongs to the individual departments to come up with that money. So when you do get grants, and they're usually very limited, they're nice to grab while you can.
Through anybody, through Homeland Security?
You know, we can, we can always look, I have been kind of keeping my eye out, but I haven't seen anything specific for upgrade in radios, so going from VHF to seven hundred. I haven't seen anything specific for that, I can keep looking, but unfortunately we're kind of on a timeline here too, you know, if we're going to be used and.
So you're looking for about eighteen thousand nine hundred then?
Correct.
Another question, just as, you know, as we've been involved in radio and pager equipment lately, and this is for, basically all this is for the SERC team, which is an important integral part of the emergency management.
Right.
Is there any possibility of the department, fire departments are getting upgraded pagers, I'm just taking the talk strictly pagers now, because of the frequency change and the reliability and that, but this is for the SERC team, is there any way, because this could be a whole bunch of extra left over. They already have the old style pagers, the SERC team?
No, they don't, they only have any.
Could we possibly use?
Maybe you could probably help me here, they used to have VHF radios, which are still going to be useful for us if we do get out and seen so, they would use those VHF radios, so we would tie up the seven hundred. It's getting the people alerted. As far as extra money and stuff, I did talk to Scott Thompson, he said there may be out there, there may be departments that have extra, but, you know, is that what they're expecting, is that what they needed, or do they have just extra, or what, I don't know, I can't answer that.
Well, from what we've seen on the figuring for the fire department, that's fairly well scored away right now, I don't think they're going to give up any, any of their money from one way or the other for their equipment, as that was explained to us, so. But I guess, yeah, the question is, does it have to be the new style pager for the SERC team?
Well, that's how they dispatching, and I don't know, that would be a question I could, I could bring up to Dean, see if they get pages out on the VHF, but I honestly think that once everything gets up to that seven hundred, they're going to get rid of the VHF.
I was just kind of thinking that maybe the fire department's whole.
That's what I was.
Yeah, that, if it's dedicated to the SERC team, is it, you know, and I don't know, but if it's a segregated unit, if they're still functional, I mean, if they don't work, they won't work with, you know, then that's fine, but.
Well, if they're working now, they shouldn't work.
They should work, but is that something that, I mean, this is a little bit different, slightly different situation than fire calls, and you want the SERC members to have, because they have no pagers at all right now.
Not they, no.
Yeah, I thought if we could get maybe even one portable radio and then they can relay the message to the SERC team, because through the other system.
In our command trailer, we do have a seven hundred, we do have a VHF.
That's what I was wondering.
And so, yes, that's a possibility. Does it matter if we have the seven hundred pagers? Not at all. I just need a way to contact them.
That's right, yeah.
If we get these new pagers for the fire department and they're willing to give up their pagers, some of their pagers that work.
That's what, that's what we're contacting.
And that's, that's not, I don't know if that's going to be the problem or not, the problem is in the dispatch, are they still going to be able to dispatch VHF? And that's, that's the question I don't have an answer to, sorry.
I don't know that either, but we can find out.
The new pagers for the fire department, is because they wouldn't work, what, they weren't going to repair the wall, just like it went down, that's why they wouldn't work?
Yeah, possibly. Yeah, possibly.
No, there, there is more dead spots.
But what I'm saying, Sandy, is if they have the one seven hundred unit and they have the, like, Kerry here has the seven hundred unit, and he has the old, the old analog system, he can relay the message out to the pagers. You know, this is basically just to alert them, they need to come in.
And that would have to be done actually, any dispatch.
Yeah, or maybe they could do it-
From a radio or anything.
Or maybe a dispatch could do that.
And there's always cell phones, but, you know, you get a howling treat, one that can take time, two, like the VHF, there are dead spots out there, and people, you know, cannot get cell service, or they don't have their cellphone, or they're in an environment they can't hear it. I mean, there's, you know, but, you know, you look at the new pagers, if you're in an environment, you can't hear it or feel it, you know, you can have that big issue.
Yeah.
Honestly, it doesn't matter to me if they're the new pagers or the old ones, I just need a way to be able to, to contact them when I need them. Now, when we had that explosion in Gilmore City, I had to make about four or five phone calls, if I found somebody who could bring the trailer out, 'cause I was already out there. So, you know, that takes time. If it was an emergency, the sooner we get out there, the better. Everything worked out great, but, you know, it just kinda antiquated the way we're doing it right now, and I'd like to be more progressive. But even if the VHF pagers work, until we can find money for, for new pagers-
That's what I was wondering if it can make, get by.
Just, I just, I just need a way to, to be able to contact them, and that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Well, for the, if you just look for the staying on pagers and well over twelve thousand dollars, I think it's worth researching the viability of the DHL system, you know. If there was gonna be shut down next month and there is no, nothing on that, it's, it's one thing, but if it's still gonna be operational, and there's plenty of these pagers around for a dozen or so people, then that'd be a heck of a start, and I'd say, phew, be darned cost effective.
Yeah, this, I'm sure that these fire departments aren't gonna keep their old pagers around.
Oh, no, they, and I doubt there's any trade-
And there's no, no value in it.
No, no. So, I'm sure we can find that information now, to see if they're still useful and operational for a length of time. Uh, and that would probably get back to the thought process on the other sixty-four forty and eighty cents, is two handheld radios?
Correct.
Would be a more reasonable-
Well, now, the emergency management only has one and no good one that I have, but there's-
One in the whole emergency management?
Portable radio, period. Like I did, I, I spent money and got three base stations, basically, one for the Emergency Operations Center, which we have to have, uh, one for the Eastern Command Trailer, which we have to have, and the other one's for the truck that pulls it, but that truck also responds, excuse me-
With the trailer, yeah.
Right. So, they all have base radios, but once you leave that vehicle or that trailer, you have no communication. You need somebody, if we have an incident, for example, and we have our trailer out there, we have somebody monitoring that radio, but we also have a VHF radio and handhelds that we give to the people that go out, and we can communicate with them that way, but we also have somebody listening to the seven hundred. So, you know, we, we don't have any way to communicate, like, we go on the truck. Just no way, so, uh, I would like to have one for our side-by-side, one of the portables for the side-by-side, so when they go out and they're doing things, they have communications there, and one for the truck.
And you do have one handheld, though?
I have one, yeah.
So, I mean, you would respond to these calls as-
I, I would likely would, but there are times.
Right.
For example, there's a guy that'll be down the line all day, what's gonna happen.
Right.
Right, you know?
And you typically take that handheld radio with you?
Everywhere.
So, it sounds like with the, with the mobile, that's in-vehicle radios, you have everything covered except one vehicle?
Well, just side-by-side, I'm not gonna spend-
No, you're not gonna put-
-that kind of money for to put a, a base radio-
Right.
-in it, side-by-side. Uh, a portable radio will work just fine. I'm thinking that, you know, that, that's one of them, and we actually have two, we have the Gator and we have the side-by-side, both could be out, or, you know, we drop our, we have a trailer-covered trailer that we have supplies, and we can drop that off somewhere and have somebody handing out supplies that should have a radio also. It's always nice to have two of them.
I guess, yeah, that's kinda what I was driving at, but, and two, that amount will cover two radios, then?
Correct, that's the quote I got for two radios.
Well, I think we'll take this into consideration and we'll look at different options.
Uh, I will talk with the radio people and see if we're still gonna be able to page VHF, and if we are, I think that using the whole fire department's, uh, pagers is a fantastic idea. It helps save a lot of money.
Yeah, it would.
And, uh, like I said, I don't care if we're using the seven hundred or the old ones, I just need to get ahold of them.
You'd get a way to get ahold of people other than cell phones?
Well, can you check what, you know, wherever you need to dispatch and, uh, get the technical thing on the pagers for sure? I guess, I could see, you know, the radio, that this is the whole radio, this is part of the whole radio system.
Yeah.
That I could see a little bit, you know, potentially more so, because-
And if, if, I'm sorry, if I would've been here and had been in the position and acted somewhat to it, I would've been able to jump on the bandwagon with the fire departments and all that, I just, there wasn't anybody here to do that, so.
Jerry, when will the grants start coming around again, that's possibly, you know, apply for more grants that could cover them?
I'm gonna keep looking at the different grant opportunities that are out there.
She said, "When will they sell new ones?"
Oh, when?
Will they start the first of the year, or?
I can't tell you for sure, I, I really don't know. You know, unfortunately, sometimes they're not very forthcoming with information like that, and sometimes it's just kinda like a hit and miss, and, you know.
I just know there is an annual one that always comes up, you know, for different, you know, sort of functions, things like that.
I don't know, I can't answer that. I do know, like, um, is it the city, Humble City has grant money that they hand out merely for disaster supplies?
Foundation, uh, foundation.
Yep, and I know that's an annual one.
You have to apply for it.
Yeah, that's, that's coming up here, I have to fill out the allocation, November thirty, they'll open up the applications.
That'd be an awesome idea.
That would be a good-
I already, uh, I have the paper and everything, I had to wait till the thirtieth to be, to pick up the application, and, uh, I was also gonna ask you for some, some other things that are going to be needed, too, so, uh, I can try with the radios on that also. Alright, well, thanks for coming in, thank you.
Yep, I'd get some more information, if you have it available, let us know, and, and, but yeah, I think checking on the pager thing is a big deal. Check with casinos, how much further they might have a little money?
I talked to Mark up in Worth County, where Diamond Joseph's, and they get a lot of money from the casinos up there, but they keep it local. They don't really-
I wonder if they send any of our people up there, then?
Yeah, and we can do that, or we can open up our own casino.
Well, don't start there, remember?
Well, you know, it's pretty without finances, anyway. But, uh, yeah, no, Mark up there, he's, uh, and, they like to do the big flashy donations and stuff like that, and really kind of emergency management, it's kinda like a now, you know, lower thing, and, you know, they don't get a lot of their publicity out of it. Uh, he has gotten some, I mean, he's gotten some, some really nice equipment, some generators and a trailer and a couple pumps and everything, I mean, he's gotten money from them, but it's his county, you know, so, they're really good about that, but, you know, we're about five counties away from that, you know? Um, I mean, I could, uh, check with, um-
Wild Rose?
Wild Rose, I mean, we're relatively close there, just a couple counties away, and see what they have to say. But I'm sure Emmett'sburg and all them have already given them a pulse.
Well, they've got it, they gotta get rid of so much of their money.
And, like, they'll put it in, they'll put it into the fire departments, they'll put it into the annual service, but they're gonna stay as local as much as possible.
Yep.
So, we are relatively close to, close to Wild Rose, it might be a possibility, uh, I can check into that.
It's halfway between the two, so.
I would send, check into it, see what they say.
We'll have to see whether we can come up with any money left over, you know? See where we're at, if we can come up with some, but, check into it first, see what you can find, and let us know, bye.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much, Kerry, for getting that out in front of us. I guess as far as our agenda, we are down to committee reports.
Okay, I didn't attend any meetings this week. I did have a phone conversation with Dave Minnickus on our landfill out here, he was gonna do an inspection of that, and take inspection, and he does, he actually does it for us, it's just the last one we've heard, so.
Excellent.
Okay, I had, uh, no committee last week, no meetings, but I would remind people of the mobile food pantry. Uh, Wednesday night down the fairgrounds, it's gonna be the same as it has been the last couple, where they drive in on the one north end and get their paperwork filled out, drive around the, or drive through the fairgrounds and, and do the, uh, pick up a box on the south end and, and, uh, just anybody that needs to stop in.
What time does that start from?
Four thirty.
Four thirty?
And it pretty much runs till six thirty, that's the timeframe, but if they run out of food, they, they're usually done, and it usually, what, day six, they're cleaned up and walking out.
Five thirty, quarter of six sometimes, it's done and over with.
And then they have a big day the next day, when people bring the food that they didn't like, put in their box, they'll bring it back up. But it works, I guess, it's not the way it works, if they don't like it, then they'll bring it out there, so.
They said, "I'll throw it away."
Yeah.
Someone might like it.
Yeah. That's all I have. Oh, I do have, I have a question about, I got a call on, uh, Saturday, um, out west town, it's a beaver tra- or a beaver out in, uh, Cornet Township, I'm sure there's more than one out there, uh, but, kid was out hunting on that dredge ditch, uh, section eight, I think, and he come across this, a beaver that is building a dam out there, wanted to know if he traps, wanted to know if he could trap it, and I said, "Hey, you know we have people that do that," and I get some info on him, "You wanna know if they're worth anything?" I said, "I don't know what we do, I'll have to ask."
This is a drainage district, needs a work order-
Okay.
-with all this information, location in the district.
Okay.
And, uh-
Basically, don't, don't they have to have a landowner sign off on it?
Not really.
Well, he'd already talked with the landowner, 'cause he got-
No, they basically, no, they don't need the landowner to sign off on it, but, I mean, obviously, the trappers, as any trapping, always get landowner permission.
Yeah.
They contact the landowner and say, "I mean, if you've gotta go out in the middle of their field to get to the ditch."
Now, they trap and season it, they'll do it, how about it?
Well, he just said he'd do it.
If he does wanna do it, though, the, it's just like, it's really, it's just a work order.
And what is it?
Fifty, fifty dollar bounty. Give me my number, I mean, we need verification, I mean-
We just don't wanna pull them out of places and-
Right.
And call them there.
And you have to kinda know who you're working with, if you-
Yeah, I know him, I just caught him making mine.
Okay, so, realistically, it-
He really needs to get ahold of trash, so he can get a work order going?
He was calling my friend, she wasn't in, so that was-
It's just a repair, it's like a tile repair, really.
Well, fine, he just said he would do it, he's out there trapping some muskrats and stuff, and he's sitting there.
Pretty awesome.
And he said, "I saw this beaver, so I thought he'd-" he called the landowner, the landowner says, "Well, I'm pretty sure you gotta call the county, and I don't know how you-"
Yep, so basically, you get, yeah, through the drainage plant, all the information, uh, work order, location, and everything before he does go out there to trap, and he's good to go.
I'll get ahold of him as soon as we're done.
Keep track of how many beavers, and, you know, it's the honor system.
Right.
I mean, it just really is, but kinda know who you're work- I had a similar request, and I told him the same thing, Bruce, I said, "If you wanna do that, that's what you gotta do."
Perfect, I'll get ahold of him.
Appreciate getting rid of the beavers out of the drainage ditch.
One over in Norway, too, if someone wants to trap one, there's one in Norway.
Norway, okay.
Number six, section, I can't remember else it got, man. But I seen he'd been out, yeah, I remember I told, telling you about the water that was in the ditch.
If you're wondering why are they so much higher?
Yeah, and somebody's been out there and cleaned it.
Oh.
There was a pile of dirt where they cleaned the beaver dam out, and it's partially back now again.
Gotta get rid of the beaver.
Gotta get rid of it.
It's a bit a little muddy.
Yeah, you have, if you don't get rid of the beaver, you can keep cleaning it out, and they'll keep building it back.
Yeah.
Well, they gotta, they're making preparations for winter, too.
They are, they want everything just correct.
They don't really stand in their garden very well, they, they need that water to get their little mound.
There you go.
That's all I had.
Kerry?
Okay, I just have an official meeting, but on Wednesday, the fourth, I do have a conference called Clarence or Polk and Hahn regarding, uh, Rolling Hills, kinda getting some information and things like that, um, together, and then on Thursday, I have a conference called Dog, Neil, Rolling Hills, uh, we're gonna have a call today at one o'clock, uh, to go over the resolution and the memorandum that we will have to do once we decide to go to, uh, that, uh, mental health region. So, there really isn't anything as far as, like, if you guys look at it, tell the Rolling Hills, uh, the government, because he actually goes through it, and then once they get it approved and finished, they'll email it out to both Clarence and, and then I'll send it out to you guys, so that all of you can do it also.
Okay. Eric?
Peggy, um, Rick and I, neither one of us told you we were at the election, when Tuesday night, sorry.
Thank you for your help.
No, we think-
Yeah, I guess it was a meeting, I guess.
No, it wasn't a meeting, most of that, we were out here, and I forgot to tell, say that, I wrote it down, but I didn't say that. That's a long night and probably a longer day for you guys.
Longer day, yeah.
For the coworkers, yeah.
Bless their hearts, they work so hard. Um, I got home about twelve thirty or so, I think I sent the staff home about eleven thirty, I was trying to get my numbers right at the Secretary of State's office, they won't let you go home until you got them all uploaded and everything matches, so you're trying to match back and forth, and it takes a while, too, your eyes are tired.
No kidding.
Right, it was a long day, and then try to get it accurate.
Yeah, I know that, too.
That's it, thank you, Sandy.
You bet.
The only thing I had was, I was out to the open house for the animal shelter and give several tours through, people come in, we greeted them and gave tours, we had five cats out there for adoption, I think one of them got adopted, and, uh, get a lot of supplies in, so, I probably spent about two and a half hours out there. That's the only thing I had.
Uh, I did not have any official extracurricular meetings this past week. Peggy?
Um, you probably saw, I put a copy on the table, that Midas is changing their name. Um, they'll no longer be Midas, they will be Task Finders, Strategic Partners.
They're not gonna be a milkman shop anymore.
We have, we have find a strategic, strategic partner.
Yeah.
TSP, huh?
Yeah.
Another an oil company, it sounds like.
Hopefully, they have that all in place, January first of twenty twenty-one. And then the only other thing I got is, um, from Bank Iowa, we got our paid, um, loan documents back, because we paid off that loan with the Geo bond, so, just wanted to let you know we got those back.
We paid something off before we-
We did.
-make a big payment?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, so we're coming back at two, right?
Yes.
Any more information on the Murray Bridge?
Uh, I've talked to adjacent property owners, um, there's, there's three adjacent property owners, uh, two of them are very in favor of it, um, one of them is, is not right now, but he's a very small portion of it. Uh, we turned in our, our additional information Friday for their review, so.
So, do you have a, like, preliminary sketch or preliminary draw? So do you have a, like, preliminary sketch or preliminary draw of that, or how did you present that to them on that?
So I went out, did it Monday afternoon or Tuesday, and I did a preliminary survey from, by Al Hemberson's mom's house down across the river, all the way north to where it matches up with Elm Avenue. And sent a copy of that in, as well as, they had some additional questions, like I had brought up to you guys previous week, as far as if they couldn't fund the whole project, will we still be interested, even if it was down as low as 50%? Obviously, I formulated your responses and put that in letter form, as well as, I sent a copy of the cost estimate that Hamilton County did for their bridge south of Webster City.
That's a very similar project.
And I said, "We're looking at something extremely similar to this. It's roughly a mile of grading, as well as a 400-plus foot long bridge." And I said, "Obviously, judging for inflation, I think I bumped it up five or 10% from what the initial cost was," and that got us around $3 million. Put all that in a packet, as well as like a site map, showing where the location was at, and sent that off.
Okay, good. Doing what we can do.
Yep. Good, good.
Awesome.
Keep our name in the hat that way.
I hope so. Keep making it through the rounds of the council, Kerry.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn and to be reconvened at 2:00.
One second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? We adjourned for this one, and we'll see if that here...